Stand for the microphone. Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Jim? Mrs. Wolfert?
Here.
Mr. Scupora?
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary? Mr. Forage?
Here.
Mayor Griffin? Present.
Five present.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of minutes from November 12, 2013 meeting, please.
I move the minutes of the November 12, 2013 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have approval of fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of November 2013? May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scupora, second, please.
I'll second now.
I have a question.
Mr. Jim, Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Question on a motion. Any of these bills that are paid, anything that's outside the budget, Alex?
No. We, I think, have noted where in the budget line item that the budget is over, but these are ones within budgeted expenses.
So these bills all had a budgeted expense that were paid on these bills?
Some of them, the line items are over, but the reason is because of unbudgeted items that were purchased before. Everything that was in here was all necessary purchases, and I do have a report ready for our next budget meeting. Thank you.
Is there a way we can get this corrected for next year? Somehow to get these changed, to look at how we can get this process changed so we can approve the bills before they're paid, not after they're paid?
Sure. If there's a policy developed by council, it'll be good.
One of the things I wanted to do, Mike, is have working committees that, you know, will be responsible for reviewing this stuff beforehand so that before the, I don't want to work through that, but I'm looking at forming two-person committees for several different things and then expecting them to report every month, so we have to figure out how we'll get that budget committee to approve these things before they're paid. Is what you're looking for correct?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, may I have one? All in favor? Okay. All in favor, the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carried, thank you. Any other citizens' requests and comments? Anybody wish to speak tonight?
Jim Bolden, 225 Irving Avenue. First thing I'd like to ask, curious, why you have to borrow money to pay your bills for the first part of the year where you can transfer the money from a general fund to cover your expenses until your taxes begin to come in in March and April? Is there any reason you have to go to the bank and waste money and borrow money from a bank that you should have funds of your own to cover that?
Can I answer that, Madam Mayor? Mr. Bolden, this year we were not doing TAM note, which is a tax anticipation note. However, on the agenda is a $200,000 line of credit. I'm not sure when it was last used, but it's a thing that we've done annually that made available to the city, available ourselves. We've not used it, nor has it come to any cost. However, to have it available, we need to go through the exercise of the ordinance. Again, what you're referring to is a tax anticipation note. The TAM note was something that this council had historically done, but last year and this year, we did not do that, and by not doing that, we saved ourselves about $5,000 to $7,000 of administrative expenses as well as the interest.
I could understand that. You've been broke though for years, and you needed the money to cover yourself, but with that hailstorm we had and what the transfer station did put you a nice balance that you could cover these kind of things. I just wondered why you would even consider it. Fortunately, you're in better shape financially. The second thing is, I've had time to attend these meetings here the last few years. I had to get away from them because of business, but now I can attend them again. I've only heard council twice say something about reducing costs. One, you want to give away the transfer station. Maybe someday that'll come out of the bush. The second thing is passing shots. You want to get rid of two dispatchers and duty drivers that the fire department has. Quite frankly, I don't even understand why these people would even work for you. 72 hours a week, six days a week, 12-hour shifts, no overtime, no time and a half, even no holidays. And from what I'm seeing in the budget for you pay those two duty drivers, I hate to say it, but I see where here, where one police officer's salary could have covered both their salaries last year. You may not think these people are important, but they're down there covering 24 hours a day. If I have a problem at 3:00 in the morning and I make that phone call, I expect that engine to be in front of my house within five minutes. You have three services that you offer to me as a home owner. Two of them, if they show up tomorrow, that's fine. The fire department, I want them there now. 90 percent of your fires start out small, but they accelerate at a tremendous pace. Someone doesn't show up for half an hour or an hour, well, I would be looking at getting a restoration company in. Now without that paid fireman, I may have to contact a contractor to rebuild it. Extremely important, more so than anything else that I could see. Maybe I'm prejudiced. I know years ago, leaving a fire call, a lady said, "If I have a problem, any kind of a problem, I'm going to call the fire department first because I know they're going to be here within minutes." So be careful what you're doing. You're looking at cuts, but where are you looking at cuts? Number one, you're a security union. You go after the fire department. All volunteers. These people work jobs, if they put a lot of hours in afterwards. We wash our own equipment, we take care of our own equipment, we raise our own money. I know you think you put in a big, what, $250,000 budget. A lot of it's for insurance. That doesn't begin to cover what each company puts into their, your bond and what they spend. We have hundreds, we have several million dollars' worth of equipment sitting in those stations that we work for, selling subs and tickets and all kinds of things. Lose that, you're in trouble. You couldn't afford a paid fire department, believe me. You think the police department costs your money doubled, maybe tripled. But once again, why, when you have a study or anything, you pick on the fire department? Because they're the easiest to pick at because we aren't unionized? Maybe we should. Maybe that'll get some of the things off of our back here. And like I said, when I have a problem, I know I'm going to have an engine in front of my house within five minutes, and that's what I look for to make sure I don't lose my house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
Jack Parker, 44 Murray Road, Latrobe. What Mr. Bolden said is completely true. Being a past volunteer fireman and now electric fireman, I have 20 years, over 20 years in Lloydsville. To have a duty paid driver, to be at that seam in the city within five minutes is irreplaceable. I just wish that you would, council would think about it, not even think about doing that to the fire department or your city. You don't know what you have until it's gone.
Madam Mayor, can I just say one thing? When we're doing, anytime we're doing budget work, we have to look at every department. We look at the police department, we look at the administration office, we look at every line item in the budget. There was never, to my knowledge, any serious consideration about cutting the duty drivers. I know there was a comment made at the last council meeting. That was the first that we discussed it. So we do value the fire department, and we recognize the service that they provide and appreciate the fact that we do have full-time duty drivers that can respond as quickly as they do. So some of this stuff tends to get a life of its own, but we have to look at every line item in budget, and we have to discuss it and decide what we need to do before we decide whether or not we have to raise taxes. We have to, again, nobody wants any services cut. You know, some people feel differently about every service. Some people don't think they need police, some people don't think they need fire, some people don't think they need clean roads, until they don't have them, then they want them. I just, I guess I'm just trying to say that I don't think anybody here wants to do anything with the duty drivers.
I don't. No, that's why I don't know why we've been bringing this up lately. There was a comment made the last meeting, but we're not getting rid of the duty drivers.
And I appreciate the concern of the firemen because whatever that comment was made, it concerns not only the firemen, but the people that they talk to and our residents. However, I confirm with Alex that any of the options that we have on the budget today don't include any changes to the duty drivers downstairs. There are other changes in the budget, but not only with any changes to the duty drivers, if that's correct, Alex, if you can confirm that.
That's correct, except for they get a small raise, which is not much. Again, Mr. Bolden's point is well taken, but on page 26, 27 of the budget narrative, there's a table that points out Mr. Bertha and Mr. Bolden's point. Values for comparison, budgets 2010. City of Alacquipo, Wilson, Titusville, Bradford, Swissville, Meadville, and Butler are all over 10 percent of their budget goes to fire. The city of Butler spends 28.9 percent for a paid department. Meadville, 16.9. Swissville, 15.2. Bradford, 19.3. Titusville, 19.9. I'm not going to read the rest of them, but it's just because to show that we would be looking 25 to 30 percent of our expenditures would be on fire if we had a paid department. It's the best deal in town to spend 5 percent and get the kind of coverage we do. So it's by no means sought to be cut. In fact, both budgets have an increase for fire. 3.4 percent is the proposal that's before tonight, a 3.4 percent increase in spending.
Like I said last month, two weeks ago, it's really not an increase. Chief Brizzilli made some cuts last year, the state of the city, about $20,000. So like, he's so far down already, this little increase is not even near where his budget was last year. So he has made cuts and stuff like that. And when it comes to the drivers, these guys aren't cross-trained and everything else. They do wear bottles, they do wear masks. They save the city about $15,000 a year on stuff that they have to do, so it's not like they're not doing nothing down there. Mr. Bolden, there was a gentleman made that statement and stuff like that. He wanted on the agenda. I think you have an agenda, it's not on the agenda. This council thought, you know, we're not fighting this. None of these people have talked about it. He made a statement, the statement was, okay, it's gone. There's no cuts there.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I have a couple items here. First of all, would it be possible to put the budget on the website? Latrobe website. I think that would be a great idea. That way, the citizens could get into that and look at it before the council meetings. I'm sure that nobody probably here has actually looked at the budget and the money we're putting out. So it may be a great idea. There's something to think about anyway. Also, previously, I've made requests, the citizen's request and comments portion of the council meetings be placed later on in the meeting, so whenever things are discussed, prior to the council voting on these items, we could say something about them. I don't, I don't think that it's maybe necessary to extend the meeting in any way, to make it longer or anything like that there, but you know, if somebody wants to make comments prior to maybe voting on certain items, especially maybe serious items, okay? Possibly, we could, you know, think about that. I've talked about it before and...
Hey Jim, I thought about that, and one of the things I was thinking about was, since we pass out an agenda, the whole point of the citizen's request, I guess the way it's written in Robert's Rule of Order, is the comments that are supposed to come up are comments, you know, people were asking for comments related to the items that are on the agenda. So even though we haven't got to those agenda items yet, most people, you can see what we are going to discuss and what we're going to vote on. But the one thing that you brought up that I thought was really important was when we amend the agenda later, and I think if we amend the, first of all, I don't like the idea of amending the agenda to vote on something because sometimes I think we don't have enough time to really think about the full ramifications of it, and unless it's an absolute emergency, I would prefer not to amend the agenda to vote on something that night because, so that everybody has a chance to discuss and think about it. But if something does come up that is an emergency and we need to amend the agenda, then I think we could have possibly citizens' comments regarding to that amendment. But you have the opportunity now at citizen's request to talk about anything that's on the agenda.
Okay, the final thing I had, I appreciate that. The final thing I had was at the council prep meeting, I thought it was disgraceful the way we treated our fire chief.
All right, do we have any committee reports? Border Authority reports?
Just a comment about Park and Rec. I'm sure everyone saw in the paper that Latrobe Community Park and Rec, Latrobe Unity Park and Rec did receive the $250,000 DCNR grant for the Lincoln Road Trail. So they will be, they are and have been and will be working to find the match. There's no city dollars involved in that at this point. Oh, there is? How much? Oh, that's right, I thought we took that out.
In the spring, the council, who's your applicant, authorized $35,000 as a match. It's a $500,000 project. The city has pennied up with $250,000, and then the local match would be $250,000. Of that 250 would be the $35,000, you know, of the city. And so both the options include that, you know, as a commitment that we made and approved at an agenda meeting, you know, the city application.
Is that a one-year commitment?
Actually, we may not pay it all next year. It's only a one-time total, $35,000, depending on when the bills come in and when the work gets led. It may be spread out over the fiscal year, which is a calendar for us, July, you know, January to December 2014. And the second part of the bill could theoretically be in 2015, but it's all budgeted for next year. There are also fact sheets that have been made available of the project up on the dies covered there.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Chief, any more?
Nothing.
Joe?
No.
Ian?
No report.
Is John here?
Walking in this time.
Okay, I could go there. All right.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I will be walking you through the different department items for consideration this evening. Under administration and finance, number one is approving the 2014 budget ordinance If you'd like, I could do my best imitation of Mr. Jim Kelly.
Sure.
He is on the road. Actually, he was in court today for a matter of litigation related to the city, and may be late for this meeting or may not make it at all. But the ordinance would be for the adoption of 2014 budget. Back to the points made earlier, the budget was first presented to council and made public on the website and available for inspection at City Hall in October, reviewed and discussed in November, legally advertised November 29th in the bulletin, and again, been online throughout that time for review. Plus, numerous copies, as Barb reminds me, have been made available to both public and to council and to staff. So with that, the council might want to entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance for the budget for 2014.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scupora, may I have a second?
I'll start.
Mr. Forage, any questions or discussion?
I have a question. The budget that we're approving, that we're talking about, there's two options there.
Correct. The one that's been posted for you is option one. That's the budget that would include an increase in your income tax from .63 to .9, and that's later on in the agenda. The other option does not include a tax, however, pretty stern cuts on the spending. Both of them have staff cuts. Through attrition, both budgets anticipate elimination of one person. The second budget balances only by reducing the general fund balance. So though it is lower and it has the same staff reductions, it anticipates no other staff reduction addition, but anticipates reducing the general fund balance from about $390,000 down about $125,000 or so to balance.
Okay, so the options will be decided later on in the...
Well, in essence, you are voting for option one. At this point, the option that's been advertised is $5,217,568.69. The budget two that has been presented, again, and the numbers remain current, what has changed in some of the line items is at $5,4478.69. That would be option two. Again, they're the same as it relates to the total expenditures. One, balances with a tax increase. The second, option two, balances with an intergovernmental transfer from your existing general fund balance to this year's general fund balance to about $115,476.70. So again, that's how that budget balanced.
So option one balances with no transfer from the general fund, but it balances with the EIT increase?
Correct. Option one also anticipates eliminating the per capita or head tax as well. So it would increase their income tax, but eliminate the per capita tax, the city portion, which is $10 a year per person between 18 and 65.
Stephen?
And they both include personnel cuts?
Through attrition, we have a retired, employee who claims retired at the end of January, that person, that position will not be filled. Back to a point that was made earlier, both in the police and in public works, through attrition, the staff has reduced. So since council, this council's been sitting here, you've seen reductions in admin, one full-time police officer as well as someone in public works. Now we'll be eliminating someone out of the tax office. When they retire, that position will not be filled.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make that out public, Alex. I did read that, I just wanted to make sure it's out in public.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is ordinance 2013-10. Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forage?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is five yes.
Madam Mayor and members of council, next under administration and finance is approving the line of credit ordinance for the amount of $200,000 as discussed earlier. This is something that is, I guess, an annual ritual or exercise for the city. It does not cost the city any money and would not use it, to my knowledge, in any recent years, but it's good to have available in case you do need it again. You'll start the year with about $390,000 in the bank, will not need a tax anticipation note, but it's good to have this just in case.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forage, may I have a second?
I'll start.
Mr. Scupora, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay.
This is ordinance 2013-11. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Forage?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's five yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is related to filling a position for auditor. We would like to have permission to advertise, the city secretary to advertise for a new auditor to be filled in January 2014.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jiven Angelo, a second?
A second, I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, any questions or discussion? Any questions? Okay, what? Does that motion? Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the next two items related to the discussion earlier for item number one for the 2014 budget. Number four is to authorize a solicitor prepare and advertise an ordinance to increase the resident earned income tax rate from .63 to .9, or a total rate of 1.13 to 1.4, and to increase the non-resident rate to 1. Back in 2009, when you last raised the rate, you had a, you created a non-resident rate of .5, and we're looking at raising that to .1. The non-resident rate only applies to people earning wages within Latrobe whose home municipality does not charge or withdraw or levy the earned income tax. There are no local governments in Westmoreland County that do not have an earned income tax. There may however, be somebody possibly living as far as Maryland or in another county who resides in a jurisdiction that does not levy the EIT. In that case, they would pay a 1 percent EIT to the city of Latrobe. Again, very rare, however, it doesn't hurt to have it. About half the local governments in Westmoreland County have that rate. Back to the original rate, as discussed, it would be going from .63 to .9, that's a .27 increase based on the median household income. That would be about $8.52 a month. This is for non-retirement income. It's for wages earned of individuals to basically non-retirement. So if they're in their 50s and they're collecting retirement income, they would not be, you know, levying this tax.
Does the school district need this money?
The school district has a .5. The school district's capped at .5. Most local governments are capped at .5. However, home rule in fiscally distressed communities may levy a higher than .5 rate. Only two local governments in Westmoreland County, besides Latrobe, have the higher than 5 rate. Greathburg, who's home rule, and Genett, who's considered fiscally distressed. Falling under the home rule part, Latrobe is able to raise it above .5. So the rate in total would be the 1.4. .5 going to the school, .9 going to the city.
What's it, do you know who Greathburg is?
I do, because I pay him. 1.65. So it would be the highest... So it would be the highest rate. Jeanette is proposing to go up, above that rate as well. They're at about a one, I think four now, and they're looking to go above Greensburg. So the income, for example, of people who live in Greensburg pay 1.65. Now, if you look statewide, those are a number of local governments, the larger ones, Redding, Harrisburg, and then over two. However, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh have upwards of four.
Four percent?
In fact, Philadelphia has the largest commuter tax at 4.25. They're making charging on commuters regardless of what the commuters pay locally in the jurisdictions they reside.
No, you didn't do this, no. No. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Jim, you have a second? Do you have a second?
I'll start.
Mr. Scopora, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll do the next item to give Jim a chance to catch his breath. It's also related to taxes. This would authorize a solicitor to prepare an advertising ordinance to eliminate the city's $10 per capita tax, also known as a head tax. This tax is charged on citizens between the ages of 18 and 65. The school district has a similar tax, which the city collects. Um, and again, as you told in the budget narrative, we would eliminate this tax if it is approved, and again, depending on the number of adults between the ages of 18 and 65, there would be a subsequent reduction in taxes.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Divinangelo, second?
I'll second.
Madam Mayor. Mrs. Wolford, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
He's going house.
Both of those taxes, as far as I can tell, and Jim might want to chime in, can be approved at the agenda prep meeting December 23rd. It's going to be tight on the advertising. We'll need to advertise tomorrow, and then advertise next week and the following week, which when will be our agenda prep meeting. So there's a possibility that we may be able to meet their advertising requirements and be able to vote on those at the agenda prep, regardless whether it's that or a special meeting, be it December 27th or December 30th, we will profitly advertise and of course work with council to get a date and time amenable to have a forum to make the decision. Stay tuned.
You want to do the next one?
The next one is related, related to planning and development. This would be to authorize a joint application with the Latrobe Community Advisation Program to authorize the Pennsylvania DCD for a $60,000 exit grant needed for the LCRP. As we discussed before, the city was a partner in the original application. We're the eligible applicant. This does not require a city, local match. Now, the match that the LRCP has is come from non-city resources, and again, we're just providing them a vehicle to make application.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, may I have a second?
I'll start.
Mr. Forsh?
Another question.
Yes, sir.
I did hear you say there's no city match to this grant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Barbara.
This is resolution 2013-66. Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Divinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forsh?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is five yes.
Okay, motion carried, thank you.
I believe that's it, Madam. Madam Mayor and members of council.
Unfinished business?
I just want to alert everybody, I will be sending by email within the next week or so, a packet for our organizational meeting. It will have a, an agenda and so forth. A couple of things, I will advertise that not only for the organization meeting, but typically we advertise it for any business that may be properly brought before council at that time. Uh, the other thing I would say to you is, if anybody here who will be sworn in has someone that is a, a favorite, a sentimental person, they would like to do that, that's fine. I'm always here to do that if, if there's nobody of choice by, by the newly elected individuals. But yes, you can very well have someone swearing, but it would have to be either a notary, a district justice, or a judge. That, oh, the other thing too is I will be sending to you by email a copy of the meetings to be scheduled for next year. Barbara and I have to look at them to make sure there's no conflict with, with holidays.
You won't have to come Memorial Day.
Okay, anybody else for unfinished business?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Forsh?
Uh, I'd like to address the city and council members. Four years I spent on city council, I appreciate it. I feel I voted fine as a blue collar worker looking, I came into this with a whole different perspective. Uh, construction worker, no silver spoon in my mouth or nothing, and I would just like to thank the city of Latrobe for the four years I had, and hopefully, maybe this will not be over yet, there's other elections coming up. I'd like to thank the city.
I wanted to say, I'll say something about Stephen. First of all, he's a good little boy.
Yeah, I've known him a long time.
He was a good boy, and as far as council, I, I submit that he's the most, most prepared person on council. And I appreciate all, he was always prepared for anything. He had his little books if he wasn't sure, so I appreciate it, all, all you did, those time I've been here, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
He was the-
Yeah, I knew it. She didn't bow to me once.
I do not bow. If I did, I should have done it again.
Boy, you've lost him.
Boy, look at that.
Was it before he was our council or after?
I appreciate it. All right, any new business? Anything for new business? Alex?
I have managers' reports submitted, and will be made available online. I just have one thing I would like to call the council's attention to. On Wednesday, November 27th, the Hope Center hosted a thank you gathering for first responders, city workers, and, and public officials. Uh, they supplied, working with various businesses, generous donations of food and, you know, tokens of appreciation and so forth. Many cards developed by, I guess, the grade school, they worked with, I guess, the Christ Divine Teacher, and I think maybe also LES to get thank you notes. And I just want to show council and the public a little banner that they prepared, and this banner has been posted at City Hall, but I, I just want everyone to see the appreciation that people have for the first responders, for the city officials, and of course, for you all, council, if you can indulge in it. So again, this was at the Hope Center. There is a manager's video blog over at the Hope Center talking about this, and this is very kind. This was their way of saying thank you, it was a great food spread. It was very nice of the Hope Center to do that, but it wasn't just the Hope Center, various businesses, the grade school, you know, the elementaries and so forth. I think in Jimmy's office or in the squad room and down in the fire hall, you'll see maybe some other thank you notes as well, but just really appreciate what they did for us, and it meant a lot, I think, for the city workers to, to have that kind of acknowledgement and, uh, this time of year. This is a very generous town, and it's not, um, it's not unusual to find in our refrigerator or in various counters, very kind, generous gifts from people who, whether it's a tray of cookies this time of year, or a tray of sandwiches. You would not believe the outpouring of support that the city workers received, and just wanted you to see that, and publicly, we want to thank the public for their generosity and thoughtfulness during this time of year.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to you in the agenda prep, when we have our agenda meeting, I'll discuss any of those. Okay, any other questions or anything? Can we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Mr. Scopora, second?
I'll start, Madam.
Mr. Forsh?
He's still a good boy.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion kept.